Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Well, good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And good morning, everyone. This is the County Commissioners' meeting for January 13th of 2020. Boy, the year went by quickly. This is our official organizational meeting, so we'll be conducting a lot of business this morning, but we want to start first with our inspirational word, "An honest answer is a true sign of friendship." And, Madam Clerk, I guess we'll start with the first resolutions.
Number one, elect the President of the Board for the year 2020.
Okay. I would nominate Lori Kokoski to serve as President of this Board for 2020.
I second it.
We need a second.
Is there a problem?
No.
You oppose?
No.
Motion.
Yeah, I move.
Discussion.
Discussion. Yeah, I've been honored to be able to serve this Board as President in 2019, and I have always enjoyed working closely with my colleagues. I think we accomplished a lot of good things throughout the course of the year. I think we continue to demonstrate wanting to work with others in the community to move this county forward, and I'm very confident that Lori Kokoski and her vast knowledge of serving on this Board and also serving on the Executive Board with County Commissioners of Association will be of tremendous help to this county in moving forward. So I'm very honored and pleased to make the motion for her designation as President of this Board.
Thank you. I accept.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Elect the Vice President of the Board for the year 2020.
I would make a motion to elect Sharon Swita as our Vice President of the Board for 2020.
And I would second that motion.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You'll make a great Vice President.
Adapt proper rules as parliamentary procedures to be followed at all Board meetings during 2020.
So moved.
Second.
You'll be the second.
Discussion. I figure it's gonna take a while.
Yeah, it'll be all right. We'll get it.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Provide each Wednesday of each month at 9:30 a.m. as regular Board meetings for 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Provide the first or third Tuesday of each month at 9:30 as regular Board meeting days for 2020 for public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Plank Commissioner Kokoski is 911 Review Board Chairman and various members for 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who are you?
Mr. Lundey.
This is confusing.
Yeah, I keep wanting to make the motions, too, so I'll get out of that habit. Sorry.
It's the first one.
I gotta keep my mouth shut.
Old habits.
I'll just sit here.
Appoint the Presidents of the various Boards, Lorraine County Data Processing Board, Audit Review Board, Records Commission, Solid Waste Management Policy Committee, Board of Health, Board of Revisions or Alternates, Lorraine County Children and Families Council, Safety Committee, and Keep Lorraine County Beautiful.
So moved, but I'd also like to make one revision to this and ask if Commissioner Swita would be interested in serving on the Solid Waste Policy Committee. She also serves with the Keep Lorraine County Beautiful, and there's a lot of good synergies with those two boards, so if you'd be willing to serve on that?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. Can we make amendment to that, then? Thank you.
Would you like to make a second to that?
I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Okay, and then we have a presentation today.
You voted on the amendment, now you gotta vote on the principal resolution.
Okay. Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Or Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Okay. The presentation today is Lorraine County Community College Support Issue 17, Dr. Brush Ballinger and Tracy Green.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have a nice crew here with you today.
You, too. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and it's a pleasure to be here, joining the Lorraine County Commissioners as we share information about Lorraine County Community College and Issue 17. Well, I'd first like to start by thanking the County Commissioners for all of your tremendous support to Lorraine County Community College, going back to the day that the college was created, and I would like to share the story of the community gift that Lorraine County brought to Lorraine Countyans back in 1963 as Ohio's first community college. And the picture that you see in back of me, on the left-hand side, is an editorial cartoon that appeared in the Morning Journal with a bow wrapped around what is now the bell tower. So this was initially what was drawn for the campus before the campus opened, and the gift tag on it says "From the people of Lorraine County to future generations." And I'm going to share just what that impact has meant for those future generations. And on the right-hand side, you see the bicentennial marker that was commissioned by the state of Ohio, signifying that Lorraine County Community College is, in fact, Ohio's first community college. And when you think about just what that means to the history of this community, I think it's really significant to think about back in the early '60s, when this new concept of community colleges was just being created, that it was the people of Lorraine County that came forward and said, "We want to create this new concept of American higher education and make it possible for Lorraine Countyans to have that right here in our community." I know that it was Jerry Ennis's sister, in fact, who was the very first student who enrolled at Lorraine County Community College.
Really? Nice.
Absolutely. She had the very first student number at LCC. It was the business and industry in Lorraine County that said, "We needed access to individuals who had skills and technological abilities to be able to help the workforce and employers be more competitive." It was individuals in this community who needed to have those first two years to ensure that they could then transfer, and so the residents of Lorraine County united together, and it was the County Commissioners of this community that helped to create the charter that then was approved by the state of Ohio. So I'm coming back to you today, some six decades later, to share what that impact has been and to ask for your continued support as we garner support from our community to help in the passage of Issue 17, which is the operating levy of Lorraine County Community College. So here's a little bit about the statistics of what has occurred in the past 10 years since we last updated the levy. The impact has been extraordinary in our community. One in four Lorraine Countyans has taken classes at Lorraine County Community College and our university partnership. When I share this information at community groups, I typically ask for a show of hands, and without a doubt, hands go up throughout the room. And I know many of you, and I know that the three of you have taken classes at LCC. More than half of the households in our community have someone who has taken classes and/or graduated from Lorraine County Community College. Right now, we have 10,000 individuals who are pursuing associate degree programs, and then we have another 3,000 individuals who are pursuing their bachelor's and master's degrees through our university partnership program. We're very proud of the fact that our student success is leading the state of Ohio among all 23 community colleges, and the indicators for that, we look at those who graduate, those who transfer, as well as those who persist or continue on to that next year. And in fact, it's been that success that led us, a year ago, to be named by the American Association of Community Colleges as number one in the country for student success. And so that's something that I believe Lorraine County and Lorraine County Community College have a lot to be proud of, and particularly, our students and our graduates are the ones who should be the most proud. Just this past year, the Aspen Institute named us one of the top 150 colleges in the country, again, not only for our student success, but the other outcomes that our college achieves with regard to our success metrics. We've had a huge increase in number of graduates. So just since 2011, we have had a 93.5% increase in graduates. In fact, one of the things that we... One challenge we have right now is we've moved our graduation into our fieldhouse. So many of you have attended our graduation ceremonies, and as you know, we are packed in, and now we have overflow into Stalker Center and other sections of the college. So the big problem we have is that we have so many graduates now that we may have to, at some point in the future, consider two graduation dates. We think it's really important to have family members there celebrating and to have graduation on our campus, but we're proud of the fact that since we were created, we've had over 40,000 or 46,000 degrees awarded with 39,000 graduates. What's interesting, though, is that since this levy was last updated, 1/3 of those graduations have occurred, just in the past decade alone.
Wow.
We're the college of first choice for Lorraine Countyans. 61% of Lorraine County high school graduates from the class of 2019, so just the class from last May, start their college experience with us. Just think about that for a second. 61% of the class of 2019 start their college experience with us, and 43% of the 2019 graduating seniors earned some college credit with us before they even graduated. That saved their families alone $6.5 million. And you can see on the right-hand side that we're the college of first choice for Amherst, Avon, Avon Lake, Clearview, Columbia, Illyria, Firelands, Keystone, Lorraine, Midview, North Ridgeville, Sheffield, Sheffield Lake, Wellington, and Vermillion. More reasons to be LCC proud. And in the past 10 years, again, since our levy was last updated, college credit plus has saved students and their families in Lorraine County over $33 million. Students have accumulated, they have earned, over 200,000 college credits. So the students in Lorraine County are not only earning college credits, many of these, most of them, in fact, are first-generation college students. This is what was envisioned when Lorraine Countyans, back in 1963, created Ohio's first community college, so that we know that Lorraine County has that knowledge, is economically competitive, and that our residents have a leg up and are able to compete in the knowledge economy. Just look at the numbers of students and the value and what that has led to. We're also very proud of the fact that our tuition is one of the lowest in Ohio. We also work very hard to create other efficiencies for students. In the past couple of years, we have cut textbook costs, just to give you an example, by more than 50%, and we've done that by moving to what we call open educational resources. So it's free for students if they want to go online and use textbooks that our professors have developed or that we partner with other colleges in Ohio. Our students pay less and they earn more. So we have the second highest return on investment in the state of Ohio in terms of what students pay and then what the return is on their earnings, and that comes from a study from Georgetown University, and that's over a course of 10 years. We're also very proud of the fact that 85% of our graduates live and work in this area. Our best value for bachelor's degrees in the entire state of Ohio occurs through the university partnership. We now have 14 university partners that deliver 66 bachelor's degrees, 47 master's degrees, all on our campus. 33 of those are what we describe as 3+1 programs, in that they can actually take three years within our curriculum and then one year with the university, and on average, that saves students $74,000. We're most proud, though, of the fact that we have another Lorraine County first and a first in the state of Ohio. You may recall, a little over a year ago, I was standing right here, sharing with you the great news that we have the approval for Ohio's first bachelor's degree offered by a community college. Legislation was passed in Ohio that enables community colleges to offer an applied bachelor's degree in programs that are not offered by universities that are specific to employer needs, and so we were able to create a program in collaboration with manufacturers, cutting across 23 different areas, and that's in microelectromechanical systems, and it's a learn-and-earn model where students are at the employer's site three days a week and are on our campus two days a week. And what's even more unique about the program is that students earn more than what they pay in tuition for that. And we're also thrilled that we are the number-one educator and trainer in first responder education. So whether it's that nurse who is treating you in the emergency room, or the paramedic who is coming to your home, or that police officer who is responding or, you know, protecting us out in the community. In fact, just last week, we had our graduation ceremony for our police academy. To date, since 2002, we have graduated over 600 police cadets, making us, again, the number-one educator for first responders in our community. One of the questions that I sometimes get asked about the levy is, "Well, you know, I don't have someone in school, or my kids have already graduated. Why should I support it?" And one of my responses is, "Do you rely on police officers? Do you rely on nurses? How about the teachers teaching your children in first grade?" And then individuals say, "Well, absolutely." And when I share that that's very important from, you know, an education perspective and who we train and educate, then individuals very quickly recognize the need and the importance. And so since 2010, we have trained over 4,100 nurses and other healthcare providers for our community. In fact, if I would have with me today Ed Olley from Mercy and Kristy Sink from EMH and Becky Stark from Avon Cleveland Clinic and Shar Ray from Allen Memorial, I'm sure they would be standing here, sharing with you that Lorraine County Community College is the number-one place they go to to hire their nurses and to hire their other allied health and nursing professionals. We've had over 2,100 graduates in business and entrepreneurship, over 800 EMS and public safety and criminal justice graduates, over 1,000 computer and information technology graduates, and close to 900 in engineering and manufacturing. We're also preparing students for what I like to refer to as jobs of the future, but the reality is they're the jobs that are here now. When we just completed our recent strategic plan that really is addressing the knowledge economy, you know, these are some of the new programs that we've unveiled just over the past couple of years, and we have more on the drawing board. Cybersecurity and digital forensics. You know, a couple of years ago, we weren't talking about these types of careers and the challenges associated with them. Data analytics, blockchain. Who even knew what blockchain was three years ago? The industrial Internet of Things, digital fabrication, and microelectronic manufacturing. We've just completed, as I mentioned, our strategic plan. I have with me Mike Sherman from our District Board of Trustees, in fact, who is one of your Board appointments. Mike is a proud Lorraine County Community College graduate. In fact, he earned two more associate's degrees just this past spring, and he, along with our other Board of Trustees members, adopted our 10,000 degrees of impact. It's our commitment to this community, by 2025, that we will graduate 10,000 more individuals who are focused on the future of Lorraine County and what the employer needs are for our community. I'd like to share some of the facts about the operating levy for Lorraine County Community College. As I indicated, this is the initial operating levy that was first put into place when the college was created. It was last updated back in 2010. It is not a permanent levy. It is not a continuing levy. We come back to the voters every 10 years to demonstrate the impact and what it has meant to the community. So it is expiring this year in 2020. It will appear on the primary ballot on March 17. So we think there's some luck associated with 17 on 17. We hope there is. It is a renewal of 1.8 mils with an addition of 0.5. That addition is $1.46 per month on a $100,000 home valuation. As I said, there is a 10-year expiration on that, and overall, it represents 12% of our operating budget. We've had an external analysis done, very similar to what other community colleges, such as Cuyahoga Community College and Sinclair Community College, have done, and for every dollar spent by taxpayers on education at Lorraine County Community College, there is a $14 return on economic benefit to Lorraine County overall. We have been in the community, working on providing information and hosting sessions and asking for endorsements, and as of the end of last week, we have been very appreciative of the endorsements by the AFL-CIO, the Lorraine Branch of the NAACP, the Lorraine County Alliance of Black School Educators, the Lorraine County Labor Agency, the Lorraine Democratic Women's Club, the Plumber Steamfitters, and HVAC Service Tech Local 42, the UAW CAP Council, and the UAW Local 2000 retirees. And we continue to, over the coming days and weeks, we want to make sure that we get out in front of as many groups in the community and residents so that we can share the impact and information about the critical importance and need of Issue 17. And we are happy to answer any questions and ask for your support of Issue 17.
Can we give her a round of applause in our college, a round of applause, please? Did a fantastic job, and we, as Commissioners, would love to add to the list of people who are endorsing Issue 17. We do have a resolution, and I'm gonna skip all the wherayses because it's pretty much been covered in your presentation, but I will get down to the nuts and bolts, and it's now, therefore be it resolved. We hereby support Issue 17, Lorraine County Community College renewal of 1.8 mils with a .05 mil addition on the March 17, 2020 ballot to continue to keep education affordable and high-quality, keep university transfer programs strong, protect college credit plus, develop new programs and services people need to succeed in high-demand fields like healthcare, technology, advanced manufacturing, public safety, engineering, and business. Keep technology and labs up to date. So therefore, we, as Lori Kokoski, Matt Lundey, and Sharon Swita, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution for Lorraine County Community College.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, as a proud graduate of Lorraine County Community College, I can say enough good things about the college, how it made it possible for me to earn a four-year degree, and I say it all the time, I really don't think I'd be sitting here today with a four-year degree had I not been able to start at Lorraine County Community College. And when I talk to so many families in the community and they talk about the anxiety they're having around their children going to school, I always talk about, you should really start first with the community college and work with the community college. And also, I think the other important part is for students to get started early with their college education. Would have loved to have had the opportunity, I think all of us would have loved to have had the opportunity, if we were in high school at the time, to be able to be earning college credit, but it's just so affordable, because I think the big story we hear, if you talk to anyone out there who's recently graduated from colleges, all this college debt that they start their life with, and you talk about greatly reducing that and making it so much more affordable, the community college provides that path, and so I think it's a wise investment. It's a good return on your investment as well, too. The ROI is very good, and saving families in this community, you know, tens of millions of dollars when it comes to tuition costs. And I'm glad to see you're working on the textbook affordability, too, you know, passionate I was about that when I was in the legislature, so...
I know.
And that's another key part that parents bring up. So you guys are just doing amazing work, and we're just so blessed to have you in the community.
Thank you.
Right. I'll share with you, Friday evening, I was with a group, and a young man is a student at LCC, and his sister's going to be a first-time student in the fall, and I was promoting the college with their family in this group, and the young man's father said that his mother initially was on the committee who went door-to-door distributing literature to start the college that many years ago.
That's awesome.
So it was. It was...
I love hearing those stories.
It kind of gave you chills to hear that.
Yeah.
So we just are so proud and so happy for what you contribute to our community. It would be a huge void for our community if LCC wasn't there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Thank you. What do you have?
I have a banner.
Oh, you have a banner!
Sure, let's go get a picture.
We can hold a banner.
Mike?
There's an opportunity.
There you go.
Congratulations, Colonel.
Thank you.
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 Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
We see evidence of your footprints everywhere, right?
That's great.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Ready? Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Corporations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Swita.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions and encased in summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Madam President.
Sounds nice, doesn't it?
It does sound good, doesn't it? The...
I bet you're going to keep us busy this afternoon.
I'm definitely going to keep you busy. It's been almost a month since we've met. So I do have a great deal of personnel issues to go over with the boards, a little bit more specifically, possible hires and the Commissioner's Office, 911. We have appointments. We have some hires, job family services. Also, a couple pending contractual matters. We've got a couple notices to negotiate, one out to Sheriff's Department, waiting for the one at 911 to come up. So that, and we have two pending legal matters. We will be visited by legal counsel outside of the Prosecutor's Counsel today in executive session. Also, purchase of real estate, sale of real estate, and the kitchen sink that I can throw in. So we're going to have a busy day. All of those topics, except the kitchen sink is allowable in the time after executive session. Discussions, I ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session, we talk about those matters that I explained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve the 2020 special revenue budget.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
And Resolution 17542 on August 23, 2017, adopting a public comment policy reflecting clarification.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye. See, I'm not the only one struggling.
I know. It's...
We are. We'll get there. It's the first meeting.
Adjust various salaries of municipal court employees, which reflects the county's two-fifth share. Lorraine Clerk Court Ted Kahlo, biweekly rate of $1,778.44 effective December 8, 2019. Alaria Bailiff Garrett, Long Garret, no longer the bailiff, taken different position effective in January 1, 2020. Bailiff Stephen Zacharias, effective January 1, 2020, biweekly rate of $962.33. Bailiff Michael Garrett, effective December 22, 2019, at a biweekly rate of $961.33. Bailiff Richard Schwartz, effective December 22, 2019, biweekly rate of $1,390.17. Clerk Court Eric Rothberry, effective January 1, that should be 2020, at a biweekly rate of $1,778.44. Judge Bennett Administrative, effective January 1, 2020, biweekly rate of $937.04. Judge White Presiding, effective January 1, 2020, biweekly rate of $914.82. Overland Bailiff Joseph Davidson, effective January 17, 2020, at a biweekly rate of $1,102.7. And Clerk Court Sandra Kohart, effective January 17, 2020, at a biweekly rate of $709.62.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Establish compensation for law directors prosecuting violations of state law in municipal courts. Ohio Reuse Code 1901.34C for the year 2020. Lorraine, Alaria, Overland, 7,500 each. North Ridgeville, Amherst, 5,625. Avon Lake, Avon, Sheffield Village, Sheffield Lake, 3,750. South Amherst, Wellington, 1,500. Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermillion, Lagrange, 750 each.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Mr. Yon sipping this thing.
We heard some crackling going on. We're like, where's that noise coming from?
Somebody snoring in the audience.
Wouldn't be the first time.
And then Resolution 19724, adopted November 6, 2019, adopting attendance standards of board members of various county boards. Men must reflect the typographical error.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Receive and journalize a regular annexation petition of 27.4297 acres from mean township to the village of Grafton. Catherine Farmbarn is the agent for petitioners, Thomas J. Nagel, Sr., Jamie Nagel, and Thomas Nagel, Jr. Hearing will be held Tuesday, March 3 at 9:30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Enter into stop-loss contract with Medical Mutual of Ohio Cleveland, effective retroactive January 1, 2020 through December 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, you wanted to comment on this Medical Mutual stop-loss?
It's, well, I can. It's just all renewal, and we wrestle with them a bit on the rates. Specific stop-losses, 500,000 proclaim per year with an aggregate 125% of anticipated claims for our aggregate stop-loss overall claims. It's basically a reinsurance product that protects us in case we have some significant catastrophic illnesses that strike the group. Yes. Hard for me to say. But it's pretty routine. The, this came a little late because we were going back and forth on the price, but we're covered going into the new year. We've been covered since January 1.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Clerk Courts enter into lease agreement with Lorraine Civic Center Committee for 2,155 square feet, a space at 621 Broadway Avenue, the amount of $1,600 per month, beginning on commencement date. Monthly base rate shall increase by additional $25 per month on the anniversary for the duration of the lease, lease effective June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Engineer instruct clerk to advertise for bids for the construction of Alaria Township's Safe Routes to School Project for the design and construction of sidewalks. Estimated project cost is $280,652.48. ODOT will provide 100% of the construction cost up to $315,475. Notice being the chronic call on January 17 and 24, and open at 2 PM on February 11.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
War contract to Trimmer Construction LLC, North Olmstead, in the amount of $1,237,301 for the Whitney Road Bridge 0291 Design Built Replacement Project. Seven bids were received, this being most responsive, complying with specifications. Estimate was $1,196,000, and County Engineer Association will provide 95% of the project cost up to $1,208,210. Remaining 5% will be paid from the MVGT Bridge Engineering Project Account. Issue notice proceed as soon as the ODOT permits, and work will be completed on or before August 28, 2020 for the above project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve an interim professional service agreement with Greenman Peterson, Inc., Brea, in the amount of $178,638 to provide construction administration inspection services for Lorraine County, 72291 Pittsfield Township. 95% will be paid by ODOT, remaining 5% will be paid from the MVGT account, and authorize engineer to execute on behalf of where the prosecutor's approval is to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve an interim contract with K. E. McCartney and Associates in minus $79,070 to provide construction administration and inspection services for Overland Alaria Road Resurfacing Project, Carlow, New Rush Township. 80% will be paid by ODOT, remaining 20% paid by OWPC. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of where the prosecutor's approval is to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Then Resolution 19169, adopted March 20, 2019. Approve an interim contract with Singus Construction Lagrange, in the amount of $52,700 for Griggs and Clark Road Drainage Improvement Project, Huntington Township. Men's refund the $52,700 will be paid from the engineer MVGT account. Stormwater management will reverse the engineer up to $31,600.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Proceed with force account for normal and general maintenance and repair during 2020 and county road for safety of the traveling public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Post 25% load limit reduction on various county roads for the thaw moisture period effective February 1, 2020 through May 1, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Sheriff, receive and filing your report in accordance with the Ohio Reuse Code 325.31 on the fees due and unpaid for more than one year prior to January 1, 2020, in the amount of $3,225,331.74.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, just Sharon, you've not seen this yet, so it seems like a very high number. But this is cumulative from the time that Sheriff's Committee took office, so this isn't really just for a one-year period.
Okay.
For your information, and everybody else's information.
Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Approve an interim renewal agreement with Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Ohio Pharmacy Services Columbus, to purchase inmate medications until January 17, 2020, at which time the new pharmacy provider Correct RX will begin dispensing. Also approve with Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services and Ohio Pharmacy Services to purchase medical supplies on an as-needed basis effective January 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, and contains a 60-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Melissa, I just want to thank you for your work on this. Did you have anything, or pretty straightforward?
It is straightforward.
Come on up, just so everybody could hear you.
We're currently in a transition between our old pharmacy and our new pharmacy. So you approved the new pharmacy, Correct RX, last month, and so we had like a two-week window for the transition. So our new pharmacy, Correct RX, our new pharmacist will be on site today at the jail and tomorrow doing some training. So we're excited about the possibility of having this, so.
Good. Thank you. Thanks.
Ms. Kukowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Public comment.
Public comment. Come on up.
My address is 461 Winwood Way, Avon Lake, Ohio, and I'm running for county commissioner. What I want to talk about today is economic development. Been a resident of 36 years in Lorraine County, 43 years licensed CPA, 42 years licensed attorney, tax attorney, municipal law, real estate zoning, licensed in the courts of Ohio, the federal courts, the Sixth Circuit, Court of Appeals, the US Supreme Court, and the US Tax Court. I've experienced in opportunity zones and benefits areas. I've looked into the ones in Lorraine with Don Vermancheck. I'm experienced with tax credits in Ohio through the Ohio Development Corporation. I'm experienced in tax credits at the federal level, rehabs, historical credits. And I've had experiences in connection with funding of projects through the county port authorities and city port authorities, including Lorraine County and the city of Lorraine, and experience in Cuyahoga County, where they use the Cuyahoga County Port Authority for lots of projects to bring economic development. I was experienced with the Flats East Bank Project, an eminent domain situation, where they use a combination of federal, state, county, and local grants and loans in order to make that happen. I'm currently working on four projects in Lorraine County. The Eagles Buildings in downtown Lorraine, housing for homeless veterans, the repurposing of Alaria Midway Mall, and with a potential business who wants to come into Lorraine for recycling and a transfer station. In the summer of 2017, I came before the county commissioners, and I offered my expertise in this area. We had one meeting, and we never had a second meeting, and there was never any follow-up concerning meeting with me. And that is one of the reasons I'm running for county commissioner. I've reached out to the mayor-elect Whitfield in Alaria. I've also reached out to mayor-elect Bradley. And this is not a D issue. This is not an R issue. It's a Lorraine issue. In November, the voters will have a chance to make a choice. Stagnant economic development, that has been the status quo, okay, in Lorraine County, or they can vote for a time of change. A time of change in the future of economic development with my leadership. And to the extent that this may be deemed a political speech, this has been paid for by Phillips for commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning?
Yeah, I would just say, Madam Chair, I hope this is not going to be a weekly campaign announcement. I don't think, I don't believe that's the purpose of the public comment section of this meeting, but we can get clarification. Your time's up, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cortez.
It's going to be an exciting year. We have a lot to do, and it's been a long morning already, but I'm looking forward to a robust agenda, things we want to get done. One of those things is, I will tell you that last night, we took on a new dispatching role. Things went fairly well, and I'm going to brief you on that, what's going on at 911 at a later date.
You might want to pull it a little bit closer to you.
At a later date. But we have some big plans, and we'll be announcing them in the next few weeks.
Excuse me. Are we distributing stuff within the, during the meeting time, campaign material?
Yeah.
You distributed campaign material for Issue 17.
You distributed campaign material for issue 17. Are you, are you gonna, you gonna violate my First Amendment rights? Are you?
Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips.
That's ridiculous.
Mr. Phillips.
That's why I'm running for commissioner.
Mr. Phillips.
Because I'm not gonna put up with your dictatorship at all.
Mr. Phillips.
You're out of line.
Please seat yourself, and if you can't comport yourself in a proper manner, you'll be escorted out of this meeting, like you've been escorted out of lots of jurisdictional
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Are you done, Mr. Cortez?
I shouldn't be, but I am.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I mean, you got interrupted, so. Uh, Mr. Ennis.
He wants you to play.
I do have several matters of updating you on pending litigation for executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Wow, I get to start first.
I don't get to go first anymore.
No, you don't get to go first anymore.
You're still last.
Well, first off, as you may have read in the papers, we've started our complete count committee, which is focused on the 2020 census here in Lorraine County. We want to make sure that everyone is counted. Kind of the first step in this whole process is that the Census Bureau is trying to recruit individuals to go out and meet with residents and take important information for the census. We understand that those opportunities are at 17, upwards of $17 an hour. Some of those positions, you can even negotiate to be part-time, as long as you put in eight hours a week working for the Census Bureau. So it's very flexible. I don't know many part-time jobs where you can earn close to $17 an hour in work as little as eight hours a week. So certainly inquire with Census 2020.
I want to mention the SNAP benefits aren't affected.
Well, yeah, a lot of benefits are affected, whether it's, the SNAP benefits, you mean from employment opportunities, right? So that doesn't factor into your ability to be able to receive SNAP benefits. And I know some people have concerns about how that impacts other sources of income that they have. You can get that clarified with the Census Bureau, but that's the first step in the process. And then from March on, they'll start really ramping up. April 1 is actually the census count date, but as we said, we are going to be meeting with faith-based leaders, business leaders, community leaders, as we did at Lorraine County Community College. We can't thank them enough for the facilities they provided. And we had probably upwards of close to, I think, 70 people that were there. We'll continue to meet on a regular basis. We have another meeting coming up in two weeks. And we are going to do all that we can to make sure everybody's counted. Each individual not counted, we lose $2,000 a year, and you can understand how that multiplies quickly over the course of 10 years. So the Lorraine County Labor Agency held their breakfast recently, updating us on labor concerns. Always enjoy those breakfasts. Lorraine County Community College also updated us on a nonpartisan issue, issue 17. I think it's important for people to understand, nonpartisan issues and levies and those initiatives don't lump them into the same category as some people tend to do, as we've seen today. Also had the opportunity to attend the Nowaka Breakfast, Breakfast, I'm sorry, Meeting in Cleveland. I got breakfast on my mind. But we were updating road projects, highway projects for the upcoming year. The five counties working closely together had a little hiccup at the meeting, but I think we've worked through it, where everybody continues to work together on highway projects in the area. Congratulations new mayor Kevin Corcoran in North Ridgeville. Had chance to attend a luncheon held by the chamber there with my colleagues, as he gave an update on what he is planning to do for the year there in North Ridgeville, one of our fastest-growing communities in all of Ohio, and now our third-largest community here in Lorraine County. The prayer breakfast in Swearing Inn of Mayor Jack Bradley in Lorraine, wow, what a great event. A lot of good prayers, good songs, a poem, and we even have a junior mayor now, I guess, in Lorraine, so. That was, that was so cute.
That was impressive.
Yeah, it really was. But, and then the inaugural ball at the shipyards. If you haven't had the chance to drop in and see what it looks like over there, it's, it's gonna be a beautiful venue and a great place to get more people to the lakefront and to Lorraine. And we're on the, you know, the cutting edge, I believe, of a renaissance in Elyria and Lorraine. Our main urban cities are coming back and coming back strong. And also had the opportunity on Saturday to entertain, to be part of, the Speak Up and Speak Out event that was held at Lorraine City Hall. I think the papers may have misquoted me. We were talking about our litigation involving the opioid litigation is not resolved. There was confusion about Cuyahoga and Summit County, since they've already resolved their matter. There were questions about how that money was going to be used. As I indicated, don't confuse us with Cuyahoga and Summit. We're still working on our litigation. There's no settlement as of yet, and we are certainly taking it very seriously. We do not want the state, as, as the County Commissioner's Association is also very much opposed to the state trying to take a large chunk of those settlement dollars and need to come back here to help people and families that are dealing with the epidemic. That completes my lengthy report, Madam President.
Thank you. Well, even though we haven't had a meeting since last year, we've been working on some initiatives that will enhance our community, and we've been attending events that are very important, issues like the 2020 census that will ensure our community will receive their fair share of the money that's distributed based on census data. School lunch programs, road improvements, and congressional seats, just to name a few. We put together the census training so that leaders in our community can strategize on how to make sure that everyone is counted. We were told that we had the best turnout they had seen, and that is because we have dedicated leadership throughout our county. With the new year came two new mayors in both Lorraine and Elyria, and there's such a sense of renewed energy that you have to be there to see and to feel. I was inspired at Mayor Jack Bradley's prayer breakfast and at the new Ariel Hotel on Broadway, only to be blown away by the new shipyard venue where his inauguration was held. I haven't seen people in Lorraine more excited about the transformation that's happening. He also had a movie for the kids at the palace in between, which I did not attend, but he made it a point to include as many people in the day's events by not charging for the breakfast or the movie, and gave great discounts to seniors, veterans, and young professionals for the gala. No one wanted to leave, including me, so thank you, Mayor Bradley, for your beautiful family and for giving Lorraine new hope. I look forward to working with Mayor Bradley and Mayor Whitfield and Mayor Corcoran, and I love that they both started out putting prayer at the beginning of their journeys as mayors. I look forward to a great year with my fellow commissioners and our staff, who are very dedicated to their work. So let's pray that this new year and the new decade will see a renewed spirit throughout the county, and hope, and hope and peace for our nation, and safety for our men and women that are serving overseas. End of my report.
Thank you. Well, they've covered a lot of the traffic and the distance we went through over the last few weeks, and it's unfortunate that our, our speaker, our guest speaker here, not guest speaker, our public comment speaker left, because I'd like to share some statistics just off the top on what Lorraine County growth and development has done in the last five years. We have created 5,575 jobs. That's five, five, seven, five jobs over the course of 2014 to 2019. We've invested 2.4 billion, and we have added payroll of $290 million. So when we're being criticized, sometimes you need to have all the facts and pertinent information in order to speak to what you might see as a loss or an inadequacy, when in fact, good work is being done. And I don't get a lot of credit for that. I've only been here for a year now, but that good work has been done over the last five years, and I'm, I'm proud to see all of that continuing. I also would like to echo Commissioner Lundey in that we were supporting a community levy. We had, they had pre-approval to distribute information, and this is not a platform for candidate solicitation or walking around our meeting and being disruptive. So it's unfortunate we have to endure that, but I'll move on. I want to thank our previous president of the board through Matt's leadership. I had a great first year, and he has always been quick to, to step to the plate, good, bad, and different, and he, the buck always stopped with Matt, and thank you, Matt, for your work this last year. Through the holiday season and through our break period, I did involve myself in a lot of holiday outreach and celebration of good work throughout our county. One of my greatest joys was Saturday prior to Christmas, I'm involved with the Sleep and Heavenly Peace Group, and on either the, I don't know if it was 22nd or 23rd, but we delivered 100 beds that Saturday morning, and it was, it was an incredible morning. We had plenty of volunteers. It didn't take hours and hours and hours. We were well organized, couple little hiccups, but it was, it was probably the peak of my holiday season. Since that time and over this time period, I've also been involved with the LCCC Citizens Campaign to support that levy, attending those meetings, as well as the census. You've heard about from my colleagues, very important that we have that census, those jobs filled, as well as the folks in our community counted. I was able to attend the Swearing Inn of Councilman Ray Carrion. That was a nice ceremony, and it was conducted over in the previous Credit Union Building on 28th Street in Lorraine, where we also have a new business going in there. So it was a dual celebration. The Swearing Inn of Mayor Zilka. Mayor Whitfield had a beautiful ceremony, as well as he had a small dinner reception. It was very nicely done, though. I was able to attend that, in addition to Mayor Bradley's celebrations this past Saturday.